It's ten o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a regular Commissioners' Court meeting, County of Starr, March 26th. Let the record show that we do have quorum, everyone being here. Also want to thank everyone and welcome you to this meeting. If everyone will please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, without any injustice wrong.
First item is minutes. I believe you all have them in front of you.
Have we approved the minutes?
Second to approve, minutes approved.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Next is claims, Mr. Carter.
Yes, sir. All the claims have been reviewed at all. I also move to present it.
I second your motion.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item five is a presentation. I don't see them here from UT Health, Dr. Brown. Are they here yet? We can get back to that one. Is there anyone else from out of town that needs to come before the court at this time? You're certainly welcome to stay, but if you all have something else that you need to leave, we can certainly hear now.
Your Honor, we do have number thirteen on the court's agenda.
Okay, let's move to item thirteen. And this is a proclamation proclaiming April as Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Yes. We have a proclamation for y'all's consideration, and if you'd like, I'll read that for the court that we'd like to have you all sign. We have many members here present who support the efforts, and we appreciate the county also supporting the efforts of Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas child abuse and neglect is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community, and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone in our community. And whereas our children are our most valuable resources and will shape the future of Starr County. And whereas child abuse can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that can have lifelong consequences for victims of abuse. And whereas protective factors are conditions that reduce or eliminate risk and promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. Whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the meaningful connections and partnerships created between child welfare, education, health, community and faith-based organizations, businesses, and law enforcement agencies. And whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that benefit children and their families. Whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, nurturing environment. Whereas prevention remains the best defense for our children and families. Whereas the impact of abuse and neglect has long-term personal, economic, and social costs, therefore hurting Texas's future. Whereas Starr County, the Child Welfare Board, the Starr County Attorney's Office, Child Protective Services, Child Advocacy Center, foster parents, teachers, and others work to ensure that children in our community have the opportunity to grow up in safe, loving, permanent homes. Now therefore, I, Eloy Veda, Starr County Judge, do hereby proclaim April 2018 as National Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Month in Starr County, Texas, and urge all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families. We do have many members of our Child Protective Welfare Board, from Child Protective Services, and our legal community, even some law enforcement present, and we would like to take a photo with the court upon approval of the proclamation.
Your Honor, make a motion to approve proclamation proclaiming April as Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Second, discussion.
Under discussion, you know, I just want to publicly thank all the different organizations that work with our children. I used to hear a lot of juvenile cases, now I hear very few, but it's unbelievable, the cases that we have in our county that go unreported and kind of get swept underneath the rug, because it's a taboo to bring it up. But, you know, we're very fortunate to have the organizations that we do in our community. And by the way, this is not isolated to Starr County. I believe that we probably have some of the fewer compared to other counties, but regardless, one is too many, so certainly thank you all for all your efforts and the work that you all do with our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
All in fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries.
We would also like to invite everyone, each one of you individually and the community, to our 10th Annual Child Abuse Prevention Vigil, which will be out here at the kiosk on April 11th in the evening at 6:30.
Okay, you want to take a picture now?
Yes, if we may.
I guess we'll just stand back here.
Yes.
I went ahead and signed this one, but make sure we get a copy for records. But you can have. Take a deep breath. Take a deep breath. Let's go back to item number five, and this is the UT Health, Dr. Brown, that's a presentation for us.
Y'all remember, good morning. Remember me? I've already retired, but we do know Texas now has an project, and I have Dr. Clifson that's going to tell you about it. So I have your rules.
Thank you. Good morning.
Thank you so much for your time this morning. I'm with Dr. Geta and Dr. Craig Hannes with the UT Health Science Center at the School of Public Health, and as you know, we've, for the last 30 years, have been doing different projects related on identifying risk factors for diabetes here in the Starr County area. And what I'm interested in doing is proposing a diabetes prevention program for a worksite. And the diabetes prevention program is actually a specific program that, beginning next month, Medicare will actually be covering for the cost of providing preventative care for recipients for that, so we're excited about that. As far as the YMCA's across the country have actually been sort of a sponsor for this program. But I'm interested in writing a proposal for a grant that would set up a diabetes prevention program here in Starr County. And because I mentioned a worksite, actually Starr County employees would be a wonderful opportunity to do that for the employees of Starr County, because they're a large employee here in the area. And so what we would do, we'd be working with your wellness coordinator to develop, it's basically 12 sessions of group sessions on prevention. It talks about counseling, it talks about nutrition, and the research aspect of it. We would also add a provider counseling on either end of that, as well as identifying some specific motivational interviewing counseling techniques that actually has been met with success in getting people to not, not just treat diabetes, but prevent people from actually developing it. The DPP program in the original trial showed a 58% reduction in the intervention arm of those people that went on to develop diabetes. So I would welcome the opportunity to work with you all here with the Starr County employees to do that. And really what that means is that if I, I would need a letter of intent to submit for the grant that Starr County would be open to the possibility of us enrolling the employees in our, in our program, that you're, you're open to that possibility. And I certainly would be glad to go in as much detail, you know, as you like, or formal proposal before you, before you did that.
This enrollment would be on a voluntary basis, or for our employees?
Yes, sir. And we're looking for people that are pre-diabetes, and that is, their fasting glucose is between 100 and 126 before they develop diabetes, and so we could use existing healthcare, you know, data to send out letters for people interested in the program, or we could set up additional healthcare screening for new people that maybe have not been tested in the past.
Well, I certainly think it's, it's a very good program. As everyone knows, I think Starr County is one of the highest diabetic communities that we have. I know pretty much the South has a lot of diabetes, but Starr County itself has quite a bit. I certainly would be interested in hearing more about it. Unfortunately, you're under a presentation, so we cannot take any action on anything, but we can certainly put it back on the agenda, and then the court can, can decide as to what...
I got a question. You said people that are in the range of 115 to 126 or something like that?
100 to 126.
Let me, does, to be a diabetic, you have to go over your A1C or something like that, or six point, some, or six point?
Well, there's a number of different measurements. Roughly 6.5 is where we would say on the hemoglobin A1C to have diabetes, or another way of measuring it is a fasting glucose over 126. And the reason why we say those numbers is that at those levels, people begin to have the complications associated with diabetes and start treating them.
You know, and I know that because it's on, on, on me personally, you know, it fluctuates the, the grade of the, you know, 125, 126, but every time I go to the, get my A1C, it's either 5.9 or 5, or .6. So, you know, sometimes you check it, and it's a 142, and, and, but the doctor, Phil Gordon, which is my doctor, said, you know, it, it, what counts is how, how your sugar level is through the whole day, and that's been measured by your A1C, and I've never gone over .6, 5.8, 5.7. Last time was .6, you know?
Yeah, it's a, the hemoglobin A1C is kind of a three-month average, so it's, it's kind of like your RBI, and then, but you can have good days and bad days, and so you may have actually low blood glucose on one particular day, and then high on the next, and so...
So what counts is the A1C?
Yes, sir. If there was one, one number, I would say that would be the, the key number.
6.5?
Give the average, yeah. Yeah. But I would be happy to come back and provide you some more details about our study, if you like, or however, however I can, whatever venue you would like me to do.
Yeah, well, I don't know what the court wishes, but I certainly...
There's no doubt that, I mean, I'm in favor of it, but we can't take any action.
Yeah, we, we...
Anything that can help the community or us, you know?
I don't know if you would need to be here at our next meeting, but we, we need to have, it is an action item.
Okay.
So we can vote on it.
Okay.
But I don't think that's going to be an issue.
Okay, wonderful. Well, thank you so much. I'll put for sort of a formal proposal, I guess I'll go through Ms. Geta and, and get it to you gentlemen, and, you know, await your vote. And if I can clarify, I've included my business card in there. If I can answer any questions, you know, personally about the study, I'd be happy to, to contact you.
Okay.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much, Doctor. Anyone else that needs to come before the court at this time? If not, we'll go back to our regular agenda. Item six is an action item, and this is to approve the new vendors list. Mr. Carter?
Yes, sir. The new vendors have all been reviewed, and the documentation is all in order.
Move to second, Your Honor.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item seven is an action item, and this is to authorize the auditor to claim funds from the Controller's Office for unclaimed property under the name of Starr County or County of Starr.
Yes, sir. Judge and Commissioners, the Starr County Auditor's Office has determined, through our own investigation, that there are, there's approximately $6,000 in stale-baited checks that have been distributed to the state of Texas, that Starr County can actually recover those funds. Just wanted to inform the court and ask permission to request those funds be refunded to Starr County.
Sure.
The checks are from various departments for various purposes. Most of the funds in recovery will go to the general fund. Some may go to different programs, or the Rood and Bridge Fund, but most of them will go to the general fund.
I also move...
I second, Your Honor. Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item eight is also an action item, and this is to select an accounting firm to complete and provide auditing financial statements and reports for the year ended September 17 through September 18 and September 19. Mr. Carter?
Yes, Judge and Commissioners, in the previous meeting, the court designated a committee and authorized the Auditor's Office to put out a proposal for bids to CPA firms to write our audit financial statements and single audit report for three, for the next three years. The committee has met and reviewed the proposals, the good and bad proposals. One is from Patillo Brown &amp; Hill, which is the CPA firm that the county has, has had under contract for the last several years. The other proposal is from Oscar Gonzalez, CPA and Associates of Park, Texas. Actually, after reviewing the two proposals, the cost, the proposed cost is basically identical. I think there's a $1,000 difference between the, between the two proposals. And the committee has recommended that we select the firm of Oscar Gonzalez Associates CPAs to perform our audits for the next three years. The total, the total cost is, per year, is $51,200.
Your Honor, make a motion to approve the committee's request based on CPA Oscar Gonzalez and Associates to be our next, for the next two years, our Starr County Audit and Financial, Financial Auditors.
I second your motion.
Motion second, discussion. You know, under discussion, I just want to add that this is certainly not anything in bad light for Patillo Brown &amp; Hill. I think they've done a good job. It's just that we had been advised many times that auditors need to be changed every so many years, and Patillo Brown has been with us a very long time, so it's, it's time that we change, so...
Yes, sir.
Just, just to add that. All in fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item nine is also an action item, and this is to increase the monthly payment to the City of Roma on the bridge participation from $37,000 to $49,365.
Your Honor, on this one, Your Honor, we're going to do a little increase of, what is it, like $13,000, so we can go ahead and start catching up on the past dues that we owe. So make a motion, Your Honor, to pass the increase for the City of, to City of Roma from the Starr County International Bridge.
Second motion.
I have a motion in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 10 is an action item, and this is, oh, to pay the arrears for the first six months on the bridge in the amount of $71,190.
Your Honor, make a motion also to go ahead and pick the arrear, to pay the arrears of $71,190 to the City of Roma.
Second motion.
Moved in second, discussion. All in fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 11 is an action item, also to approve the certification of additional revenues by the county auditor. Mr. Carter?
Yes, sir. Judge and Commissioners, you know, I am proposing to certify the additional revenue from the wind farm. That was not in the tax form, and I propose the tax payment actually received into the February. So the cash is in the bank, and that, that amount of payment is not budgeted, and it's not in the adopted budget. I recommend that we certify that revenue and make it available for the state.
I second, Your Honor.
I second, Your Honor. Moved in second to approve. How much were those amounts, Mr. Carter?
The general fund amount was $390,000, round numbers, and the, and the Rood and Bridge Fund was $149,000, which is...
Any other question? All in fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 12 is an action item, and this is to approve the discontinuation of further funding for the County Self-Help Center.
I'd like to make the motion to table this for the next minute.
I second your motion.
Moved in second to table, discussion. All in fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 14 is an action item, and this is to approve proclamation design, designating April as Fair Housing Month. Ms. Iberia?
Yes, Judge, that is correct. It's a proclamation that we do every year in April.
Regular proclamation. I also move...
I second, Your Honor. Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 15 is an action item to approve a resolution that the Starr County Border Interdiction Unit to operate between the period of October 18 through August 31st, 2019.
Have we approved the resolution?
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Item 16 is also to approve a resolution in support of Operation Stone Garden, I'm sorry, Operation Linebacker, grant number 2994704.
I also move...
Second, Your Honor. Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 17 is the action item, and this is to approve installation of one street light on 1023 North, Farm Market 649. Commissioner?
This is the South area, have we approved?
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 18 is an action item, and this is to adjust the sheriff's cuenta salary. Commissioner?
Just can we take this in here, or do we have to go to executive session?
Either way, we can wait and come back and discuss it.
We can have a discussion and execute everything.
Okay, we'll skip that one. Item 19 is an action item, and this is to approve request from Commissioner Peña to budget amendments.
19, 20, 21, 22.
Yeah, 19 through 22 are budget amendments, Mr. Carter, are they in order?
Yes, sir. The budget amendments have all been reviewed and then all...
Motion to approve, Your Honor. Budget amendment.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 23 is an action item, and this is to accept a lease payment to Echo Site in the amount of $1,000.
To accept the $1,000 for the project program?
That's a donation. Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 24 is also an action item, and this is to accept a refund check from VTCI, the telephone company, in the amount of $18410 to the General Fund Fire Department, precinct four.
Second, Your Honor.
Moved in second, discussion. All in fair, please say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item 25, action item to approve, and accept compensation of $830 from Ms. Ilona Salas Garza to Starr County Election Expense Services. Oh, rendered under public information request.
Yes, good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. It's just, she did a request, and we're charging for labor and copies, and we're asking if it can be put into our election expense.
I also move...
We're getting back, ain't we?
Yeah. We're paying back for the copies.
Okay.
Okay, I have a motion in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 26, also a contract, to approve a contract to conduct the South Texas College Board of Trustees election.
Yes.
I think, I think we have that before us.
I also move...
I second, Your Honor. Okay. I have a motion in second to approve. These are pretty much the standard contracts that we've always used.
Right.
Okay. Any other question? If not, all in fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carry. And then item 27 is an action item, and this is to approve a contract to assist and lease equipment to the City of Redondo City for their election.
I second, Your Honor.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries.
Thank you.
It's 10:30, and pursuant to section 551.074 and 551.071, we will now go into executive session to discuss order of salaries, to discuss and possible action on cost number 0718-CV-00046, and cost number 716CB00103. We'll be back shortly. It's 12:15, and we're back in, in open session. Items we discussed in executive session, one was order of salaries.
Have we approved the order of salaries, presenting, Your Honor?
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. The other thing we discussed was action on cost number 718CB-00046.
Your Honor, on this one, I make a motion... Your Honor, on this one, I make a motion to hire Guerra and Leeds to provide defense for the county for cause number 0718CB00046.
I have a motion, a second to hire Guerra and Leeds. Discussion. All in fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And then the other litigation that we have is cost number 716CB00103.
Yes, on this one, Your Honor, I make motion to authorize election administrator to propose a settlement for cause number 716CB00103.
Second motion.
Moved in second. Discussion. All in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, and then we go back to item 18, and this is an action item to adjust the sheriff's salary. What is the salary?
I want to make a motion to adjust the sheriff's salary as what it was before we cut the supplement, and make a retroactive...
Second motion.
Moved in second. Discussion.
On the discussion of the dinner, the full amount is in question. I think it was 16. You have to check, and it'll be retroactive.
Any other further discussion? All in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Make a motion to adjourn, Your Honor.
Moved in second to adjourn. All in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.